It is one oh one PM, we are going to begin this work session of Lake County Board of County Commissioners. Thank you, everyone. Uh, agenda item number one today, review of the proposed Lake County financial policies. This is led by our Finance Director Candace Bryant. Thank you Candace.
Are you just here to learn? Or just getting used?
Heath is one of our biggest spenders.
Hey, big guy.
In a good way.
You gonna fill the room?
Yes. Get them off the counter.
Okay. Very good, that's what I'd like to hear. Alright, so I really um put some thought and time into redoing our Lake County uh financial policies. Um, this is um modeled a bit on um Eagle County's policies and what I really love is that it defines who will do what and puts um a little bit more of the ability to manage one's budget uh into the person who in my mind owns the budget. So guidance from BOCC, like what are your top level dollars? Uh, and then working with counties to understand what did they plan for in their budget? And understanding their budget well enough to be able to use the policies to record their revenues and expenses uh correctly. And the other thing that I really love about these policies is it um takes the doing everything off of finance so that people can utilize these policies to make the changes that they need. I also pulled the um process piece out of the policy because processes change all the time. Like Tyler Day is tomorrow. Tyler is our accounting software for anyone watching. Um, it, you know, it's gone tomorrow for some reason. We decide to change systems, like the process changes, but how we do what we do doesn't really change. And so the goal with these is to have our best thinking about what does it suck to be fiscally responsible? And says how we will do things versus what the process looks like could look different for different departments. Um, and we did have this originally on the agenda to approve everything by the fifteenth and I have asked to pull that back. Change is hard, change is even harder when you change all of the policies without clear processes for people to walk through. And I want to create a process manual to accompany this so that when I ask for people to follow something new, there's a clear walkthrough of how to follow it, how to accomplish the task they're being asked for. And then I have time to meet with people to explain it to them before we just throw it up there and then wonder why it doesn't work and why people are frustrated. So I'm asking for us to work towards like a June full approval date so that the processes are clearly defined, not created as we muddle through the policies. And I think we have perhaps done that in the past and I really want to be more intentional to have people set up to be successful. So we actually use the policies we create.
Can I pause one second?
Yes.
Hey, I keep opening these things in a way that interferes with the thing that you shared.
You have to copy the whole thing and make a new one. Or don't touch it. Just don't touch it.
Can I? I don't wanna uh derail the presentation, but I would like to not have to look up there.
Got it.
Can I just?
So go back into Teams for me. Wait a minute, you don't wanna work off of this one?
Yeah, so like what, what happened before?
How about over your three dots? Open, open an app and then it opens it in the desktop application instead so it holds its formatting as if it were a Word doc. But we are working off of the shared doc and you can see he's in it like ET came from outer space to check in. What's up?
And this is a working, so this is a working graph, so like as we take notes, I'm gonna put in comments and reviews, so if you-
We just can't legally change the agenda. Oh. Yeah, Andy was asked to open up the, we were all asked to open up PDFs. Excuse me, so that we don't disturb a legal document as opposed to, so just don't-
Okay.
You just type away in here, you're just, you're just fine. I might have remembered that.
Okay, thank you.
That's awesome. So essentially our introduction just says this is our foundation for long and short term planning and it's supposed to help us with decision making and providing direction to staff for how we handle our financial business. I've been reading this whole section, not you. Um, this highlighted section, I wanna have a financial procedures manual and link that in. So when people are in this document, they'll be able to click into that procedures manual, which uh what we're saying in this document today is that the procedures can change without having to come before you to approve the procedures, but this policy that we accept when we accept it won't change unless we have the sort of a meeting again and decide together to change. So our budget policy, which we've kind of loosely had some uh parameters around budgeting. Um, this establishes our timelines that are statutory. Um, that we will relate the goals in our budget and our long-term five-year budget to the goals and objectives that you guys provide for us uh and also to any strategic planning that you guys adopt. The budget basis, um this just explains that we operate on a modified accrual basis of accounting and it says when we record um revenues that are received and how we and when we record expenses. Um, and this is all dictated by the audit that we're under. We have to operate on a modified accrual basis. Um, this section says that our budget will be balanced, that we won't um budget for more expenses than revenues. It's why when we make a, a change between funds, which we report things to the state at the fund level, that we have to refile um any of our budgets with the state to say, hey, we made a change. So that's what you guys are doing when you adopt a supplemental change is you adopt it and then I submit that recording to uh the state and then we adjust the budget to reflect those recordings. Um, budget control level, it just says we will not overspend in any fund category. Um, we'd be violating state statute if we didn't. Supplemental requests, this says, hey, sometimes we need to make changes because things have uh changed throughout the year. Those will be posted um publicly, they'll come to a meeting, they'll be either accepted or not accepted and so we won't overspend unless we've done a supplemental. Um, I bolded this section because there's been a lot of um confusion, uh I think, for departments. At the end of, at the end of the year, all of your appropriations lapse. So you finish the year and you get a new appropriation or budgeted amount for the new year. Um, so just-
Carryover.
Yeah. Yes.
Yes.
And then we do that carryover through a supplemental process. We just wanna make sure people know, hey, there's not like a rolling bank account. Quite frankly, we're all in the same bank account for the most part and we're using fund accounting to assign um buckets to dollars. They're all in the same bank account, a different fund doesn't mean we've opened up eighteen bank accounts. So this is just saying, hey, at the end of the year, like we look at how you did and you get appropriated by you guys a new amount in the budget adoption. So I can unbold this, I just think there's been a little confusion for a lot of people um about that piece. I just wanna make sure.
I like, I like the boldness.
Managing budgets. Department heads and elected officials are responsible for managing their expenditures at the account level within the amount they're budgeted. We would like for departments and offices to strive to stay within their budget while being allowed flexibility to deploy appropriate resources. Um, and that we will report to you guys as, as you, as often as you'd like, we do quarterly, but you can tell us whatever you wanna see. Um, to see those reports. Um, revenues and expenditures, this just kinda defines what a revenue is, what an expenditure is and that when we are budgeting for expenditures, um we will try to do that in the most cost-effective manner possible. Um, if there are departments that charge fees, they can reach out to finance if it looks like they're gonna have a shortfall for us to help them assess and determine should they increase their fees. And then this is a really big piece, we've said in all of our policies before um that we will be thinking about long-term planning. Um, but this really says, hey, we're gonna look five years out into the future when we project. Um, and we're gonna be updating those five-year projections as we get more actual data from revenues and expenses throughout the year. What I really love is this table. This says who will do the what, uh and I think that's really important. What we want is that department heads and elected officials feel like they understand their budgets and that they can really own them, that they know a revenue is coming in and they can tell finance, hey, this is where I budgeted for that, so here's where I'd like to see it recorded so that we've got a really good communication through piece between us helping you budget in the correct bucket and then both of us helping you, you know, get it into the correct place that you budgeted for it. Um, I get expenses all the time and people are not sure where to record it and my first question is where did you budget for it? So we want to make sure that when I ask that question, that people understand where they budgeted for it and that it's really budgeted for. Or that we, if it's really unbudgeted, not that every dollar has to be like, you had ten dollars in postage. Sure, you probably have ten extra dollars in your budget somewhere, but then let's start to recognize those things and budget for it the next year.
We can catch it in the moment, it informs the next time you budget.
Yes, and closing cash, we're reconciling cash to the treasures, closed cash every month. Helps us start to catch those expenses and revenues in the month where they get put in the wrong place. And say, hey, whoa, 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 we saw this come in for you, is this a grant? If it is, where does it go? Let's have a better communication by being more timely and making sure people understand the budget. Uh, financial reporting policy. Um, we have to do an independent audit. Uh, we're required to follow generally accepted accounting principles, which are established um by uh GASP that sets the gap for state and local governments. Um, we use fund accounting. Um, we use modified accrual accounting for our basis of accounting. Um, this defines that um when we uh acquire assets that are five thousand or more and have a life expectancy greater of one year, including capital leases, um that we would consider those fixed assets and account for them appropriately. And this is what we currently say we will do. So I just made sure I reflected that in this new document. Um, leases, we have to record uh leases and contracts. We record all of them, but when they exceed a hundred thousand dollars, they meet what's called materiality for our audit. So we really have to account for those correctly, which we're trying to do a much better job of. The leases signed, making sure that signed and reported document gets sent to finance. Cash and cash equivalents, we uh have a small area in our policy that talks about petty cash funds. So other than a petty cash fund, we wanted to find that all cash gets deposited with the treasurer. So just so you understand petty cash and change funds, that's just like, you know, when, when uh goal or pros has to like make a change for people that are at the skating rink or that kind of thing, that's what this fund would be. Our current policy doesn't define how many dollars the cash fund should be limited at. So I highlighted that so you could maybe give some insight into how much you would, would want to be out there in cash to make change. Um, and if anyone asks for increases over a hundred dollars in cash, we wanna make sure that they are reaching out to the county manager to get that approval level. Cause they may say we need more change. Good, just somebody has to know and you have to reconcile in the cash at the end of each day. We're making sure you've got the cash you took in plus where you started. Sorry.
Is that all they need in a register?
I don't know, I guess that's why I highlighted it. Okay, I would like to know.
Unknown.
That's generally good, most retail registers I've worked are rated that and I feel like we're transitioning away from cash society.
For sure. Just kids with their five-dollar bills.
Yeah, they actually do a lot of small dollar transactions.
I love that Candace just gave me her money. I did not. I did actually. Um, revenue accounts receivable, uh we would like that you are informing uh our Lake County Treasurer in advance of large deposits. So anything over twenty-five thousand dollars electronic or physically being deposited, we'd like a, hey, this is coming and here's where it goes. And we've actually been really great about when Patrick gets a depositor in ACH and he doesn't know where it's at, I've asked him, hey, loop me in immediately and he has been. So then I can, I mean, most of the time when it's in ACH, we can see what type of money it is, but then we've gotta go track down the recumin to figure out whose deposit it is. So we have been tag teaming, just like chasing down all of the people we've identified who maybe it's theirs so we could make sure that it gets recorded correctly on his side and on our side. Um, so I feel like we are just asking, hey, if you know this is coming in, give us a heads up. And departments have been doing that, so that's really helpful for them to say, I requested a reimbursement and then Patrick and I are both on the lookout for it. Uh, revenues from grants, we definitely have to be kept in the loop about those, especially federal grants. So we really are working with departments to make sure we are getting the information from, for the grant before they've applied, like the application information, so we know what we are required to report. Um, and then we'll kinda walk through the grant steps here, it's in a later policy that this is linked to. Um, so we'll go over that at a high level. Um, all contracts for expenditures have to be executed uh in, in alignment with our uh procurement procedures. Uh, and contracts have to be reviewed um by finance and, or not finance, finance and legal. Um, there are a couple ways you can pay for expenditures through P card electronically uh and through accounts payable. Um, AP invoices approvals and requirements, these aren't really documented anywhere I could find, but we use these in finance. So I thought I should include them. What we say right now is that for budgeted expenses, anything up to a thousand dollars, approved department staff um can, can approve those and say, hey, code this to wherever they'd like it coded. Um, a thousand dollars to just under, uh or just under seventy-five hundred, a department director can say, hey, this budgeted expense, please pay it, here's where it's coded. Um, if it's uh over that seventy-five hundred limit but under twenty-five thousand, we say the next level of approval is your county manager has to approve that. And mind you, these are all budgeted expenses and then anything over twenty-five thousand, even if it's budgeted, we want it to come in front of the BOCC. Um, big reasons are sometimes what people thought they would do is different from what the invoice comes in at. And we just want somebody to say, oh wow, when we discussed this, I thought this was gonna be thirty thousand dollars and now it's a hundred and thirty and that is a whole different story. Does this require a budget supplemental or do we need to maybe rethink what we've agreed to do?
So are you imagining that goes on like us, signed by the chair, that's on a consent agenda?
I think that's up to you guys.
So I think that's up to RFP process as well.
Sure.
So because if we're talking about twenty-five thousand dollars, that's formal procurement and so that's some, one of the procedures that we need to think about to complement this document.
Yeah.
This is, we've already have a contract, we're just paying them. I would just, for your own time, consent will do the consent.
Leases, we have to go through the contracts and procurement policy. Um, we don't want anything signed that hasn't been reviewed by legal. Um, and also departments should be informing the county manager and providing the documentation before any of those things happen so it can be communicated uh appropriately. Um, inter-fund transactions, inter-fund services provided are, are, excuse me, I had to put a "are" in there. Are provided and any use are accounted for as revenues, expenditures and expenses and reported as either due from other funds or due to other funds. Um, this is really just explaining some things you'll see on some of our audit statements. Uh, when we move money between funds, there are due to and due from accounts so that you can see the movement of money if you have to go back and look at it later, which is very helpful when you see that uh something got moved so somewhere that it shouldn't, you can fix it. Um, but also it kinda gives you a historical background of, okay, we approved this on this date, here's when that money moved. So those due to and due from accounts, um they help us move money between funds, which happens. Um, fund equity classifications, this really just defines according to GAAP um how we uh talk about different fund types. So non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned and unassigned. This is gonna become really important as we think about, do we need a fund? There are a couple questions you ask yourself, is it restricted, is it committed, is it assigned? If it's not, it often can live in the general fund. And so when we talk about restricted, committed and assigned, restricted funds are generally those that are from um higher than our level of decision-making at the BOCC level, that's gonna be state statute. You know, those, those funds, they, they may have really strict restrictions around them or specific circumstances. Uh, committed, that's what we decide all together and vote on as the OCC to commit funds and we don't really want them to touch for things if they're committed to something else. That can help inform, hey, we wanna create a fund or earmark that money in a way that it wouldn't be uh spent inappropriately. Assigned a little more flexible, you can assign dollars to a project and it can change later. Um, but you wanna be careful when you restrict money cause then you're really not supposed to touch it for anything other than what it's been restricted for or committed to. So we wanna think about when we create a fund, does something really need its own fund? Or can it live in the general fund and we use accounting codes to put it in the correct department and subdivision? Um, we are very fond happy here, right now we have thirty funds, which is, or thirty-three.
Yes.
Yes, we have a lot of funds and so the question we wanna ask ourselves is, is this a fund? And if so, why? Where's the documentation and how did we arrive at it being a separate fund? Um, and we wanna be intentional to not create funds we don't need, it makes the reporting process exciting.
Can we um trim down the number of?
Yes. We, we are, we are. Um, end of year processes, this just defines the period in which uh we'll consider to receive invoices and code them back to the prior year. You have to have a cutoff at some point where you'll just never have the books close for the audit to be done. So what we really wanna see is that we don't really want to be receiving revenues and, or recording revenues or expenditures that come in after sixty days, that's two months after the close of the year. Um, otherwise we get into reporting days like we did today and we're having to try to post this back. Part of that is we have to have people get their invoices to us within that sixty-day period. Can't sit in your inbox for a while.
Isn't that what you have, we let them?
Yeah. This, thank you. Sorry. Um, we also wanna, the only exception to this is grant funding. We, we do really wanna try to get grants posted back to the appropriate time period, but most grants know this and they are trying to get us our funds before this timeline. Internal controls, uh this kind of just talks about uh the separation of duties. So in finance, we all have different job descriptions and no one that is making a change would be back checking themselves and we try to really keep whoever's recording accounts payable, accounts receivable, separate from one another so that there's no ability for someone to, to make a change that's fraudulent and then cover themselves. Um, county manager, uh department heads and elected officials are responsible for making sure that they are following policies so that we have internal control of assets and financial transactions. So this is just a major part of managing and organizing operations at a county where we're utilizing tax dollars and we wanna be transparent. Um, this just defines who will do what in terms of how we get things done. Um, one thing that we are kind of asking department, um department accounts payable, so some departments put their packets together, we review them and process them, but they're getting their packet ready to roll with Tyler. And then we're just back checking, making sure the vendor's correct, that they've assigned it to the correct place, that it's not um something we shouldn't be uh approving or they've got the appropriate levels of approvals before those happen. Um, we wanna ask that those people understand these policies are in, and are enforcing them. Um, we, we wanna ask that you're back checking these before they get to us, we are back checking you, but if you can just make sure you're following our policies. Um, we ask that department heads are making sure that the correct levels of approval and coding are included before you submit your invoice. Um, you saw some of the chains of emails, try, and we understand if you don't know who, who should own an invoice, like you've received an invoice, you're trying to figure out who belongs to, that's great, but we get, hey, pay this invoice. Okay, cool, where does it go to, where, where did you budget for this? Is it over this amount? Go get it signed, we'd like to see that that happens before it comes to us. We know that there are exceptions when people don't know where things go and we can help them. But it would really streamline our ability to pay things quickly if we knew when we got it and we're not sending ten, fifteen emails trying to get that piece for every department in the county. Um, we'll make sure that we backcheck everything, we've got two levels of, of backchecking in finance. Uh, we'll make recommendations if we see that a, a department doesn't have good internal controls. And then uh in our accounts table, Nikki and I are working on a training video and also to be available to help uh other AP staff that are processing packets if they have any questions and to clarify. This is the best way to get things done that is, is clear and follows our policy. Stop me if you have a question, it's also, it's forty pages, so keep us rolling.
I think it's cool that Heath is here, so that when you say you, we know like-
It's you.
Heath gets to represent all of the department. And when Karen says we, we understand like, yeah, that's us, okay, that's you, okay.
This is a little-
Some little thing at the bottom is for, you do this, you do this, I do this. Yeah, I love it. Thanks for being here, babe.
Yes, thank you. Trying to make it clear but not take all of our day. Um, business expenses, this outlines um what is expected in terms of expenses. We prefer at Lake County that you use accounts payable where invoicing is possible. Um, and we would like to see department heads, because they are owners of their budget, approving in advance expenditures, invoices or P cards. Um, what we see is that there are people who are not department heads or elected officials that have P cards, there does a need. And some departments, and we'll talk about the, which departments have more than one person with P cards. Um, you need to know that that person is spending dollars that have been budgeted for and because you own your budget, that means we're not tracking you down for approvals and receipts. Like they should be provided because you knew the person was gonna spend that money before they did, especially if it's not you and you have a delegate. Um, we want that employees state the business purpose of their expenditure uh if on a P card or through the reimbursement process. Um, so that way when I get a quarter request for every expenditure by Bob for the last eighteen years and I have to pull that data together, it's clear why Bob spent the dollars he spent. So we're just asking, please have a reason, cause we get asked to pull that stuff. Um, if an employee is requesting reimbursement of expenses, that should be made to finance within thirty days. This is a little shorter than what we've, we've asked for in the past. Clearly if someone is in your department Heath and they're gone for a temporary thirty days, we'll work on a process for how we can streamline that for your department. That's a big reason why I like having process separate from policy. Um, we, finance will furnish the form. Um, this says that you can ask us for it, I really wanna get the form dialed in and have it available on our website or through a link in here. Um, that gets submitted to accounts payable. It is the responsibility of the person who owns the budget to set and enforce guidelines within their department for the appropriate use of budgeted dollars. You know what you budgeted for, I would love to say I've, and our AP has memorized your whole budget by line item, we haven't. We expect that you know that so that when people are- We expect that you know that so that when people are spending, they have your authorization to do so and we're not chasing them down to figure out what on their, the funds were sent for. Um, we wanna make sure that you're making every effort to purchase something that's fiscally responsible. That's demonstrated by purchasing the item or service that accomplishes the task at hand for the most economical cost over the lifetime of the item or service. Allowable cost, we want to be grateful for service and amounts that are no more than twenty percent of the purchase price. We've never really defined gratuity, but we really wanna stick to that, so we're fair across the board. Um, I included some allowable examples. I highlighted this, this fifty miles because maybe we wanna change this radius. We really wanna encourage people not to be purchasing meals. Um, in town, um, anticipate some meal limits. The big thing is, it, this should not be in your normal daily business. You know, businesses write off um, fifty percent of their meal expenses and I think that's in people's head, we're, we're not a business like that, we're a nonprofit, we're county government. And we really shouldn't be purchasing meals if we're traveling for work, but not after work and saying, well, I worked late, so. Business expense.
We're here, so how does it work, like if a department head decides like, hey, like, people be crushing it this month, um, I'm gonna throw a pizza party, roll over a bunch of high mountain pies.
Glad you ask, cause I wanna add that to this, but I kinda want to know what your language around that is. I'm more like, is it, how, I, I think if we say that's fine, then you have to set clear definitions of when is that fine? Once a quarter, once a year, what, what does that look like? So I'd love to get input about what you'd like to say.
That can slowly become, every time we have an all-staff meeting, I buy a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars worth of food. For every, a weekly meeting, which is not okay.
Yeah, so what?
I'll tell you that it's new job, the B O C, or their city council buys food every week.
And their holiday party costs thirty thousand.
Sure, I wonder if their county brings it more or less.
Oh, the one with screens, gee, I wonder if they have that.
Have you seen that?
Yeah, that's fair, you can budget for that.
Maybe there's just an approval level that's higher than, you know, like is that?
I said this down here, but you can hate that language and change it too. I was just like, occasional.
Okay.
That's okay.
Well, they team event, et cetera, with prior written permission of the county manager.
I like to have it documented, so if you get a question, it has been approved, but that seems up to you.
Those are kind of hot, red flags in the paper when you see high mountain pies, twelve hundred dollars.
Yeah.
The tree line, which you know is the cheapest place, you know, nine hundred dollars. Those are, those are question, question marks for anybody, including you. What are you spending a thousand dollars on pizza for?
Yeah, I can roll sushi, we can have sushi parties.
I can do it, I'll do it.
Other things we define, and these are just, this is not every allowable cost on the planet, we won't lay so much root, but these are like the big ones, like we'll pay for your airline and lodging expenses once it's warranted, but we do ask that because you're owning your budget as a, department director or elected official, that you're approving that travel before it's spent. Um, and asking when we're traveling to conferences, are there um, discounted room rates included if I book early enough? Because I'm a planner and I plan to book this conference before the day before. So, does that include parking, like can I get the sales tax removed? We wanna be asking those questions to know when, when we're booking and trying to get, you know, decent rates. Because a lot of conferences will give you a discount if you're going for a conference on your way.
I mean, is there a way we can say? Can we like highlight, hey, this is a place of, with a lot of, this section has a lot of scrutiny, rightly so, and it's probably our least. Uh, is the hardest one to manage? Or say something like a little bit of pros at the top, that's like, what we're looking for is prudence. What we're requesting of people through these is to like, use your discretion.
Yeah.
And understand that these are taxpayer dollars. Obviously you've got like that at the top of everything, but I think that, these are just saying and highlighting this section to drill down in, to help people.
Would you like me to fold this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's why I did it right before I said that, cause I was like, maybe.
Yeah, but I mean also even to like go more, uh.
It definitely won't die.
Well, yeah, to be more, um.
More direct in what fiscal responsibility is.
More layman, yeah, even to be like, hey, focus up, right here. Stop it.
Put the whole section in yellow.
Yeah, yeah.
Heard.
Un- italics.
Every, I think we could do to note it.
Just, just something that's like, we're asking for prudence, we can't lay everything out here, please, please.
This is not meant to be an exhaustive list essentially.
Yeah. And that will, will look at, you'll, the finance department will look at it really closely.
Well, and to an apartment director before he even makes it to us, I think if there's two levels of people really paying attention to what's going out the door and that is really helpful, then wanting one person or two people to analyze every expense that goes in and out the door is. Would you just have it perfect and, and really like we, we don't know what you budgeted for, but we help every department build their budget, but our accounts payable person doesn't know what he budgeted for in this budget. You, you know what you plan for at your budget, so you need to kind of own your, your people and what they're doing.
What if you have a department or elected official that's not combative? I mean, elected officials can really, wouldn't have to do any of this with them.
They all have to do it.
What do they, when they don't follow the rules, how do they get held accountable?
That's why P cards are so hard. It's why we prefer not to have a lot of them out, we're lowering the limits on them. You have to have a written documented reason if I'm raising your P card. Um, because accounts payable, you just don't pay it until we come to some sort of like conclusion about how we will follow the financial policy. They may not be held to policy, but I am, I have to print your invoice and I'm gonna follow what I'm required to follow. So it, it's kind of a stock gap that finances not gonna process something. It's why the packets get routed to us and we process packets that are put together for us, but I'm not gonna pay something that just completely doesn't follow our policies.
Yeah, I think in that, those kinds of situations, not where, that's puts us in a hard place, but it also reminds us that what, where our powers start to stop. And if we have a situation where an elected official is not following county guidelines with, with financial regards, then, you know, we, we don't have to give them a P card, we don't have to give them extra budget. You know, we're just obligated to make sure they can do their minimums of their mandated tasks. And that's it, and we, we control the purse strings with that, and that's really our only leverage in those situations.
Yeah.
They're not gonna follow the rules, they aren't gonna have no extra tissues or like staple, whatever they're defined, it's like, just, just, you know.
Paperwork.
You have paperwork, so.
No paper, true anyway. Um, non allowable costs, alcoholic beverages, personal items, gift cards are not considered eligible business expenses and shouldn't be reimbursed.
So, I wanna ask about gift cards, uh, and certainly for a holiday party, we've given out either Safeway or Bay Harbor gift cards, Charles, that.
Can we not?
Ever again, so what?
Because the IRS is, is taxable, which is very exciting to account for.
Same thing as students is part of the packaging, so how we.
Get them gifts.
I think everybody is tricky.
We have a lot of gift cards also for like D H S or the senior center where we like. Yeah, those are some gift people necessarily gift cards, so that they can be themselves.
I suppose them. That's different when it's not an employee, this is like when a gift card goes to an employee, then it's taxable.
Everyone gives to send a gift, it's the same thing.
Yeah. So for staff incentives, historically we'd use gift cards. And so now, for monitor things, right, when you do have those staff incentives, we, it's best practice will be to buy the thing.
Scratch and snuff smiley, please stickers.
I think this is why we're doing this, so we can figure this out, I mean, I'm, I'm almost like, if that's the thing, then I, I wanna cross the board like twenty-five dollars on the paycheck and budget for it. You, you know, it, it's all taxed the same, but then me trying to take a gift card that was a hundred gift cards purchased on a P card and then allocate them to each employee and then tax it is. Is crazy. It, we just wanna do things that make sense, so if it's like, if, if you, I think it has to be like, that's what we decide to do for everybody, it needs to be fair. You know?
The Zoe has to report, she knows who got that gift card.
Yeah, I know, cause we have to report it. Yeah, but I think.
No, you do too, every single one, huh? Um, so okay, so no more gift cards, is it really a hassle for finance and like that?
See, we wanna appreciate people, but maybe we just have a, a better how.
Can we just be clear that this is for employees and the.
Yes, yeah.
What we've been doing is, um, like, for example, um, senior center bought a bunch of Rockies tickets to take the seniors down there and then they had a gift card.
Yeah.
Whatever, I just put that on the monthly manager's report to say, hey, F I I, this happened, this was a gift card expense that wasn't approved, so that there's like, they have to report one day buying gift cards.
Yeah, we're not, we're not sending it to none of you, I'm out to people who is giving a gift card.
So I heard Candace say a, a bump on their paycheck, you know, like, can we just have a, come up with some kind of really physical certificate that's like, hey, here's fifty bucks, it's gonna show up on your paycheck, would that make your life easier?
I think as long as it's documented, we have those, like, why.
Yeah, and so I'm specifically thinking at the end of the year holiday season.
Yeah.
We, there has been a one-time staff bonus added to checks, there has been, um, paired with that like, I think it was a twenty-five dollar gift certificate. And so there's a long history of this with staff as well, kind of expecting that. So, this makes sense, I'm taking the notes so we can help frame this, but this is just thinking ahead our time.
Cause we are not planning.
Yeah, we just let staff know, hey, here's why we aren't gonna do gift cards again. Here's the shape and form it's gonna take now, we're not cutting back on how much we love you guys, we just have to change how we show it.
I think Candace is just scared, cause two years ago I took second place in the staff challenge and I got the gift card.
I'm not scared. Just a way to use the R P S A for accounting, uh, weirdness.
Oh, so excited.
We're making a video. So we wanna make sure, uh, we also don't pay for your speeding ticket if you're working on staff time or on county time, just to clarify. That's a you situation, no matter what vehicle you're in. Um, we really wanna try to be specific, that clothing that is not specifically for doing a job or a uniform piece is not an allowable expense.
Thank you for clarifying that for anyone who works at a county.
Can I make, can I make a request just from my own brain? As I read things, bullets are so helpful for me when it's in this form. So like, when there's a list, yeah, if you could make it a bullet.
I can do that.
Thank you.
Um, receipts, we wanna clarify what an actual acceptable receipt is and we're gonna rely on IRS over here to help us do so. We need an itemized receipt that shows why you spent the money or you document it on the receipt or in the email that you've sent us the receipt, or if you're uploading it, you can, there's a spot for you to in the, um, P card, give the reason. Um, we wanna see the amount of the purchase, the date of the transaction, the purpose and the people who participated. Um, so just to be clear, it's really hard when we get a receipt and the receipt is cropped and all we see is the amount that was spent on a flight, I'm like, did the county pay for that? Is that like, personal flight, like what was this for and? Who, who is this for, there are three people in this room or one person in this room? Like, there's a lot of things that the receipt defines for us, so we're not, uh, having to really dig. We just wanna a full picture of the receipt with these items in it. So when we get asked for that receipt, it's not like we received a receipt and accepted one where we have no real clue who did the what and when.
Is there a little piece of paperwork or something that goes, here's the receipt, here's the date and the description?
There is a spot with the P cards to envelope that, everything else goes through A P, so you could put it on the invoice if you want to or, but this is more like when people are on, traveling and getting reimbursements, um, this really applies to P cards and travel reimbursements for the most part. When people need to be refunded for things, for if they went on a P card, does that make sense?
Sure.
Now I enjoy the, I'm gonna see.
That's totally fine, as long as it's legible. Every once in a while, I'm like, what's, what is this? Or, I, I mean, I taught at school for a while, I can read a lot of things. Um, fraudulent business expenses, uh, reimbursement requests that are fraudulent or misuse of the Lake County purchasing card is serious. Uh, and this can result into disciplinary action up to intermination of the employee. Um, because really these are funds that don't belong to the person utilizing them. So we ask that before reimbursement requests are submitted, that, that apartment head or elected official or their designee, designee, they have a person that handles like admin for them. Um, you need to be approving those before they get to us, we shouldn't be getting reimbursement requests from an employee and then we're tracking down the person who should have signed off on it. We are not gonna process those, we're gonna get them right back to you every time. Um, we want to see that people own their budgets, a part of that is knowing what's going into and out of them. So we ask that you approve, um, things before people go paying for them, especially if they have a P card or, um, are gonna go on a training. And we ask that before your reimbursement requests and receipts or P card charges are submitted to finance, that you, you've approved those for people.
That also helps make sure it goes into the right line.
Yes. Um, for the employee, you need to keep, or you need to obtain approval before you go buy things. You need to keep your itemized receipts and then you need to submit them to your department director for approval before they come to us over at finance. Our job is to report things where you ask us to, um, and to make payments to employees who've submitted for reimbursement that have approved requests. P cards, I'd say, um, P cards listed right under acceptable business expenses for the reason that they fall under acceptable business expense requirements. Um, we're saying that we are only going to issue these to elected officials, department directors or designees in certain departments. So like in D H S, they have emergent needs, sometimes they need more than one P card, depending on who's on call. Um, public works, sometimes they have emergent needs at nighttime. Emergency services, like the sheriff's office, he has people that are transporting, um, transporting people to other states. They have one card, cards with the person transporting human out of the state, then what is he doing over here when he needs to pay for things? So we want to have that those are a legitimate and documented business need if someone other than the director or the official has a card.
Do we have, um, gas cards?
We have been working to get Acorn set up for departments as we recognize that they don't have an Acorn account here in town, um, but I don't think we have a card for anywhere out of town.
I've had, I've worked at a place where we had a gas card that went with each vehicle, so you could track mileage, the amount of gas spent. And then you could tell that people weren't like, using gas money to pay for like snacks and stuff, so it lived with the vehicles, you could track.
We have an Acorn card and it works.
I have used one, it works better than the Pumps do, the Pumps are kinda janky.
Right, and it works at a handful of other locations, also it does, yeah.
Yeah, you don't have to use it as a specific spot.
Yeah, you don't have to use it at a specific spot.
So what you're talking about also is something that we're very interested in exploring, having a little pouch that has the vehicle insurance route of call.
The title, yeah, yeah.
Exactly, and then a little form, this is your mileage out, this is your mileage in, this was the business purpose, this is where you went, this is who went with you.
Yep.
We bought gas, it was returned full, um, all of that information in one turnkey place that will be entered into um a relational database so we can better understand how we're using our fleet vehicles and then also make it turnkey, pun intended, for staff to take our fleet vehicles and go on the adventures that saves the world.
Yeah. Yeah, totally.
Awesome. I really liked that because so much of traveling, so much of P cards has to go with somebody as they go, and if they just have
Yeah.
a gas card, that kind of can reduce the amount P cards you
From a security standpoint, is it weird to have a card with the vehicle itself, like some legion of night or something like that?
You gotta check out the key.
I would say it goes, it goes with the key where I've seen it. There's a whole checkout system.
Yeah.
Oh, the binder, it would go with the
Yeah.
And then there's like emergency, what to do in case of an emergency. Here's all the forms we fill out. If you get in an accident, here's our insurance, here's who you call.
Yeah, yeah. So we're saying each vehicle would get one of these?
Yeah.
It's just a proposal. I'm just asking if it's happened or not, but that's
It hasn't, but we've been discussing this cuz we're trying to figure out what's the best Yeah, way to track our vehicle use and also not have
Okay.
We have a number, yes.
Yeah, P card.
Operational, is there add a pretty big workload? Is it streamlined things?
I think once you have a good process that you streamline things and that's why I've kinda turned any process out of the document so
Yeah. It's gonna be streamlined.
Okay.
we can update processes as we have agreed with or as we're setting our ideas.
Good.
Yeah.
Cool.
You gotta
I like I like the part where you have to describe where you're going and what you did and why you need a card actually.
Search to purposes. We also wanna understand how the fleet's being used and how much it's being used.
It's part of fleet management and it's part of P card management.
Operational efficiency wise, I'm just wondering about having a separate card and basically account attached to each vehicle. How much workload does that add on finances and?
It's not a different account. It all goes to one account.
Yeah.
And it's one and and how I've managed it, so.
Okay.
And this feeds into the discussion of the fleet living and it's um, oh yeah, like it, so.
Hmm.
Okay.
I think enterprise that offer the gas program too, for countywide enterprise that might have a gas option.
Yeah. Okay, both the name of the cardholder and the county appear on the face of the card. Purchasing card carries corporate liability for the county, which is why we need to manage them, but carries no liability for the cardholder.
Yeah.
Each cardholder has to complete a cardholder agreement form to be kept on file for the duration of the card use. This agreement will be submitted to and kept on file with the finance department. Whatever we do, people sign an agreement before a P card goes out currently. Um, allowable use. Um, purchasing card provides an alternative method to pay vendors. However, it does not change a department or office budget. All purchases that are um done on P cards have to be properly budgeted. Total purchases for the month shouldn't be more than the cardholder's limit, which we have it such where it wouldn't allow that. Um, cardholders have to advise vendors if the county is exempt from paying collateral sales and use tax. Purchases must follow the approved business expense policy. And then we reiterate
Local points is not ten local.
Things um that are not allowable. And then also what we we need to see for receipts.
Mm-hmm. Um, I I see with often and I agree with the alcoholic beverages aspect to this. Um, being that we're in Colorado, do we need to add any verbiage for people who are thinking that the county's gonna pay for the grandship?
Sure, we can add that.
But I mean, just the
Do it.
You know, you think you don't need to, but then see, see, you know, what happens.
If I don't.
Yeah, you never, yeah, you never know what someone's gonna, you know, it's medicinal, like
same, there might be some someone down the road is like
Did not expressly prohibit it.
Yeah.
Liz is currently adding notes over here.
Oh, and they're popping up there. I was like, uh-oh.
No, no, they're not. I'm just letting you know I'm listening to you, but I asked her to like I'm not just like great, great comment. Um, limits, this is what I'm proposing. Department directors and elected officials, two thousand dollars unless there is a documented real need. Everyone has a reason they need a higher limit than two thousand dollars. And often upon discussion, it's found that they really dumped. They might just need a one-time limit increase, but there are some things that at Lake County, uh, Microsoft and Google don't feel that we are large enough to invoice us, so sometimes those do have to go on a P card because we collectively don't spend enough money for them to invoice us. Um, and I'm not important enough for analysis, for Microsoft to change their policy for us. But we have tried.
We need to be a lot of support.
So there are moments when this is like, hey, there's a real reason uh that it needs to be raised. What I love is that we can set an expiration date. If you really need a one-time limit increase, we just need it in writing. Why do you need that increase? The amount, the reason why, the date that we're gonna have it end at, so we don't make it end before your uh expense hits. Um, and we want you to do it each time that you need an increase. What happens is you move it, it doesn't get moved back, and then all of a sudden there are every person in the county has a seven thousand dollar limit, which is not happening, but just example, we don't want that to happen.
Maybe like a forty-eight hour.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, exceptions, um, we have some departments like DHS. I never wanna know that they had an emergent need for um a kiddo and they needed more than two thousand dollars. And they didn't, it's on a weekend, they can't get ahold of anybody. I think that there can be some documented reasons, you know, why we might have a higher limit. If you are a department designate, we'd like to see that this mimics what we say in our procurement and AP approval invoice. We'd like to see that those people are at that thousand dollar limit. Because that's what we say in all of our other policies and it's confusing when we have different numbers everywhere. Uh, transactions, you have to code and upload the receipts uh by the fifth day of the month. Um, we have gotten most people on this train, but every once in a while we have people that miss it. We send a notification and we're kind of trying to follow the three strikes, you're out rule. One time we give you a nice reminder. Second time, it's like, hey, we are pausing your card for thirty days. Third time, we are canceling your card. It is a privilege to have one and not to have to go through AP for everything, but it is also a responsibility and a liability for the county. And this holds us up in processing those transactions each month. Cuz like the fifth day of the month of what, we're in April, I would actually be coding the months before receipts. So this is what you're coding, so we can close the books on time. And then we just define who does what.
Yes, for a point of personal privilege.
Take a short break here for personal privilege.
Count sixteen of thirty-nine, so I may just hit the high points. But those are kind of the main different points. Keep watching, so excited you're here.
I am.
Thank you for being here. I'll make it faster for this.
What I love though is he's here and past experience from other sheriffs on this, his his face hasn't shown and his brain is blasted over.
No drooling, vague stare into the corner.
Yeah, exactly. No like, what?
Chris, this one I'd like your thoughts. I like to keep the bid and bid process, what people need to do to get a bid separate.
Yeah, I guess. I I think I would like to, yeah, I would like to see that
Cuz it could change.
that kind of, cuz it doesn't fit nicely into our contract administration
Yeah.
process really. So I I agree, I think we need to look at
The process, yeah. So we can link the process in here, but like the process could change if our systems change.
Exactly.
This was exciting reading this.
Are you thinking about a cheat sheet for people?
Uh, that's what I was thinking.
I'm having a new cheat sheet.
Flips them.
Yeah, the flow, the process flow and you know, I agree.
Or just the amounts and
Yeah, cuz I I I will suggest a lot of folks
The steps to follow will be short and brief with a nice table.
Table, there you go, because this is laminated.
Yeah, table.
You encourage them to read it, um, but then to have that, cuz they're not gonna go back and read it every time and they're not gonna remember it in between.
In a perfect world.
Um, but also some of this is gonna, it's gonna be a lot, kinda confusing with your your running coach. Just tell me.
Tell me, let's see, I'll go do it. I don't need to think about it that much.
I just kind of give up.
This is her court. Hopefully she doesn't hear that and say, we didn't do anything. I asked her last week.
I don't care about it. I'm like, I don't care. Cuz I know there's a way I can figure out how to believe, but I just haven't got a chance to yet. I mean, vermeos. So that you don't even have to do that anymore. And I was going through and doing that and I was like, I don't have time for this anymore, like I, once I realized I'd said probably fifteen of them, I forgot about it. I was like, oh, I can forget a lot, but I don't care.
I think I just deleted.
Sorry, this is not the best.
It's What I, what is not lost on me is how the lack of this and like this, the
Gets wild.
Yeah, like the stories that I've heard from previous electives about how things were ran, you know? So, you know, yeah, I understand it's not riveting stuff, but that doesn't mean that I'm appreciative or stuck. Keeps us
Heck, yeah.
Such a better place.
Yeah. Are you? I'm so glad.
It's gonna hurt me speaking to myself.
Okay, okay, you keep going.
Yes.
All right.
Okay, procurement policy. Um, this really mimics what we already say. Our lovely little table, and I tried to make sure that the invoice approvals and uh budgeted um procurement processes kind of follow the same levels. And um what I'd like to do, and I just said this to Chris, um, we actually have a procurement process, like what do you do for small purchases? What do you do for moderate? What do you do for each of these? We are gonna link that in a separate document that says this is how you have to get a bid for each level of um of uh service that you're seeking. The, a big thing is that we wanted to find how we are going to be fair and how we choose who we'll do business with. And this
So
Kind of sets that.
Fifteen plus is gonna be formal procurement, whereas the other one, twenty-five, so.
We might wanna change this. I don't know. That's up for debate.
To go higher?
It's up to you guys. This is like if they have to go out to bid and who can approve it.
Well, and that's of course unbudgeted too.
Yeah. Budgeted follows the other one. This is like if it's not
Yeah, yeah.
Sure.
Probably gonna have a a lower threshold for unbudgeted.
It's just, this is different than allowing them to afford the funding. This is do they, what type of procurement do they have?
Yes, this is like what
Oh, I just gotta clarify that for people.
Yes. This is like what process do you go through to like be fair and how you get bids? And we can actually put that in this document. I just don't know if the process would ever change. So I kept it separate. We have it in our current, right now I have linked in our current policy cuz it has it in there. Um, it pretty much just defines how many people you'll get bids from, how you'll, like how formal it is, like so things that are larger expenses, they really have to be like RFP and we have to review them and legal has to review it versus um, when we do small purchases, we say that for procurement purposes, you think you have to get what?
Is it two?
Two, two quotes.
Three, we we aim for three, but maybe two and one.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I would suggest going up. It's just a lot of staff time to review the whole.
Yeah, it is, yes.
I know.
Literally this morning our chicks hatched and every time this chairman said noise, I'm like
It does sound like it. I was thinking that too.
That waiter's Literally it popped out eggs this morning and I'm like
Can't hear you.
Sorry.
So I do have to find selection criteria, like how we'll clearly choose and what also other things. We don't always choose the very lowest quoted price because we wanna honor local vendors and people that we've had experience with before. Or if we have really great experiences with vendors or you know, other things that in that historically the BSCC has defined that are important to them.
Yeah.
Um, there are exceptions when needed. These are like in emergency situations. Um, if it's like a federal or state or government contract, they may have and likely will have more formal stringent policies about that and we wanna follow that when we're in that sort of an agreement. Uh, contracts have to be reviewed by the Lake County Attorney's Office. And this kinda runs for who will do what, and then I'll definitely, you know, work with Chris on contracts and procurement to say, here's how you submit a contract. Or if you've gotten bids, here's how you submit it and who you submit it to and a timeline for that.
And then goes with this to Chris and his standard court pocket to set up that.
Yeah.
Have an automated process to manage that weeks and stuff like you did on procedures meeting.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, payroll policy, uh, Zoe and I worked on this um a bit and this is a departure from our current handbook. Mainly, uh, we really need payroll submitted and time to start processing it. So what happens is hours have to be approved. And then we can actually start running payroll. And because everyone does not enter payroll into Tyler, some of those were having to go and find people to make sure that what their person worked is really what happened and that was approved. We're working on streamlining that process. Because we in finance don't know why let whoever work eighty extra hours of overtime in addition to their normal eighty hours. We don't know that. Or did it just get typed in wrong? We don't know. Uh, and as much as it is to chase down every person's department director if they're available, we need for that to be happening before it gets to the approval point and that it's communicated to us if it's an outlier. We still reach out to people, but we've had some issues with payroll just because we we need a better communication tool. And so we're exploring process improvements for this. But this defines who will do what. Um, HR is gonna be responsible for maintaining employee information, personal information, benefit selections, wage rates, employee tax information. We're responsible um for verification of time sheets, making sure that like they're submitted and we reach out if we see that something's off. But we ask that it's approved and reviewed before it makes it to us. We make payroll-related changes that are not related to someone's pay rate. That's really important because we don't want the person pushing out the payroll adjusting rates. We don't want me cutting myself double the amount on my check and then paying it out and it's just part of a transaction that goes to Patrick. He just sees the big lump sum. I run away, you never see me again. We don't want that to happen. So what we want is that we set some guardrails around who can change what within our system and that we are working on getting those permissions changed as Zoe gets a a new HR position she's trying to fill. Um, payroll-related corrections from departments, we can make those and then we run payroll and we pay the taxes quarterly. Um, payroll schedule and approvals, we're asking to see if we can move it up to ten thirty. What happens is often this does not happen and we've gotta go chase down those outliers. Uh, if it's not happening by two P M, then we're really behind. We start to process payroll as soon as we have those numbers. Someone has it, make sure everything's entered and entered correctly, any adjustments are made, and then it is ready to start back checking by like Tuesday at noon. That is a fast turnaround. And then we have two levels of backchecking. Uh, we backcheck several different things, so we don't need to be doing that Wednesday when it needs to have already had the file process because then we have to have it ready to go to the bank and for you to sign it by Thursday at one.
Thursday one every week, be here, not on the chairlift again, I swear.
She's a donor, man.
It is. Um so so if there are discrepancies on your paycheck, we want you to check with their manager first, maybe there's something you didn't understand. Um if it's a missing check because the time wasn't approved, we'll need the manager to then approve the time. We really try to catch that and reach out to people for them. Or if there's a problem with tax benefits or withholdings, then we want you to contact HR. Non-wage payments to employees, all money gifts and benefits are included on the employee's reported income and we follow the IRC code, which is the internal uh revenue code, which IRS puts out. So we we follow their kinda table that we had earlier, which can change from year to year, so I do try to always references when reference it when we're trying to do taxes. Um elected officials are their pay set in statute, so we don't give them extra things unless it's, you know, that's over the statutory allowed amount. Uh severance, we we will discuss these with HR before we process severance payments to make sure that we're accounting for any pay ends to uh benefit, any of those sorts of things and we we work with HR on our side to do that. Then we define who does what. Employee gift policy, pretty much reiterates everything we've said above and I put the tax table in here. So we can see what's taxable and not. And some things like the IRS has depends and you'd have to have a discussion about whether to tax them or not. Um gifts from other outside entities or individuals, there are actual rules around what we can receive and not receive cuz we don't want it to appear that people are buying favors from us, so really we shouldn't be accepting gifts over seventy five dollars. Fund balance policy, um I have highlighted a few things in here, we we don't have a policy for necessarily minimum fund balances and so I'd like to propose one, you don't have to make decisions today, but your feedback is much appreciated when you have time or if you need feel passionately about this later. Um right now we have a reserve a a general fund reserve policy um that got approved, but nothing ever happened. So all of our general fund reserve is really just sitting in our general fund, um which is fine. Uh if that's what we wanna do, but if we really wanna reserve it, then we actually have to create a separate fund to reserve it or we have to earmark it an account where we set aside whatever those dollars are and call it reserve. If you reserve money, you can't touch it without a plan to replace it because that's what we currently say. So we really only wanna restrict ourselves in that way if that's really what we intend to do and then we wanna communicate to uh Patrick or finance to go actually do that. So I think this is a good thing to have a discussion about. A lot of people just establish a minimum fund balance um of no less than three months of operating expenditures. Our current policy says we will do ten percent of projected budgeted revenues. I wonder if you guys saw how on we were uh in our budgeting. That feels like a work in progress, so maybe that's not how we wanna determine our reserve amount. So I propose, it does seem like we pretty much know our overall expenditures, we know what went out the door cuz it went out the door. Uh so maybe that's a better um suggestion. Or if you guys wanna do less than three months, fine. What this says is we won't run negative fund balances. And this is assessed usually like once a year.
Yeah, so we can start with these as, you know, let's test the waters with this, there's problems that arise. It's really tough to like predict.
Three months seems pretty industry standard, which.
Yeah.
Three months, hundred days.
Yeah.
And then of course we wanna honor taper reserves that we're required to. Um some of the funds uh that were statutorily required to hold, um what this says is they could be considered with the general fund when we're talking about um that twenty five percent of expenses, we could look at expenses for these departments together to say, do we have twenty five percent or three months of what we saw in expenses for one month through these departments? That they can be considered together. We're statutorily required to have a public health fund um and the insurance reserve fund is separate, but we could look at those together to come up with that minimum amount that we have on hand at all times. And I like this because um this kind of like, we say we're always gonna have this on hand, but it's not restricted in such a strict way that we couldn't use it if we needed to, but that's really up to you to determine how strict you wanna be with. Like you said, tying people's hands in the future, but you also like, how much do you wanna tie your hands in terms of like if you needed to touch?
Mm-hmm.
This one.
Mm-hmm.
So I I would ask that you really look at this, read it, understand it and then really give me some thoughtful feedback that when you've had time to really think about it would be helpful.
Good work.
Yeah.
Our teacher knew it's coming out.
Yeah. So this is what we currently say we'll do, but it doesn't seem like we really, other than the um the mine closure fund, didn't didn't really define how much money we would put in these buckets. So we said that we wanna keep a current level of reserves, great. And then we said that it'll be ten percent of what we budgeted for operating revenues, which I'm suggesting.
Twenty five percent of expenditures.
Yes, and then it says that if we fall below this minimum reserve level, we'll try to restore it within a three year period. Um we call it a general fund reserve, but we never actually created a reserve account. It's all just sitting in our general fund, so I don't mind if we do this, but I think we need to like clearly define, is that what we wanna do? Or do we just wanna say we don't let our general fund get below this amount? And if it's getting to be below that amount, uh and I think that finance should review and give to you guys what that amount is each year at the end of the year, here's what we spent, here's what we think we need in reserve for the coming year. Um that we would have a plan to restore it. I do think that's important, but whether it's in a restricted extra fund outside of the general fund, that's up to you.
I like that. Three years seems smart. To create a plan, a plan for three years, I'm thinking about like if an emergency happens, you know, some massive systemic shift, then we should be planning operationally how to shift so our expenses can allow for that to rebuild. And obviously our expenses would probably increase.
Yeah.
Our budgeted expenses would probably increase if we're dipping down below that. Really important. I like three years.
What we currently say in our policy is that we've got a contingency that's ten percent of operating revenues. Um we have a stabilization reserve, which is the mine, this is technically, I took this language from where we're at right now, so this can change with due. We've got our mine closure fund, um I do think it might be helpful to to define what we want to be putting into this, maybe not in this document, but in a resolution that is cited in this document. And I think it would be really great to make sure that each year we're thinking about capital reserves. Like how much do we want to to budget for capital improvements and making sure that we really set that aside to do that. So case in point, we committed.
Five million, we committed to the project for the court mess.
Five million.
Five million, thank you, sorry, that's the grant. Um so five million, which is sitting in our general fund, um not in a separate bucket. Um as much as that's great to think somebody is gonna remember that and still be present to remember that, I think we need to be intentional about if we say we're gonna set something aside or do something to really do it in the correct fund and make sure like we do that to reserve it and I I just think we said we would do some of these things and then like.
Yeah, let's put into a resolution, but we need to get better in the role.
Make sure. Yeah. Yeah. So I think making sure that when we say that, you guys in in saying and accepting those things or saying we'll do it, we'll define where you want it to live and even if you need to say, hey, Candace, can you give me options for where it could live account code wise? And fund wise, or whoever's in that role, like just make sure that we're doing, if we say we're gonna do this, we do it. And it gets communicated to be done. Um and then we say that other things we can create are personal and operating reserves, should we need them. And it says who will do what and how we'll share that information and then that we will start to work to say, hey, towards the end of the year, as we're coming up to December thirty first, here's where our fund balances are looking like they're gonna shake out, so we can make some decisions about what to do each year. Grants policy, I'll hit the high points of this one, um big changes are, if a grant is less than ten thousand dollars and not funded by federal funds and does not have a required match, we are proposing that it doesn't need a grant committee review before someone applies. If it's awarded, it still has to be accepted by you guys, it's a contract, it's an agreement. Um and finance needs those dollars or those information pieces, but anything under ten thousand, we, what we hope with this policy is to empower departments to know their budget, to understand their grants and to manage them with great communication between finance and them. Um if you're gonna have one that's over ten thousand, we want for you to set up a time for our grant review committee um to go through the pro- through the grant you wanna apply for before you apply. Um so what we ask for is before you come to the grant review committee, we meet twice a month, you say you need to get on the on the schedule with us, we wanna see the grant application and your projected budget, how much is it gonna cost this year and future years? Are there any financial commitments to the county, uh all tracking and reporting requirements? And our process for how you're gonna manage your grant, a department lead and a backup for if you ever leave us. And just a detailed budget, because what I'd like to start doing is working with each department, here's your budget for the year. Okay, what grants do you have and did we include them in the budget? So we wanna know that you have a plan for your grant before we say yes.
So is is there anything included about like, hey, you've got this grant for something that's gonna cover what has previously been budgeted for? We are, if this is approved, we exercise the right to pull that out of your budget and reallocate it to other.
I think it depends on the terms of the grant, yeah, some grants are very specific about what they can be used for. You mean if a grant's gonna cover something that year, it depends if it's multi-year.
Yeah.
I think uh that is a, it depends.
Yeah.
I think that's a bigger like question we can ask when they have to adjust the budget, it's a supplemental to change their budget to have less or more.
Okay.
What we wanna do is stream on this process, the current grants policy is that everything comes to finance and then we have to track down ten different decision makers that we really need to answer from. What we want is that the decision makers that would have information that would say yay or nay about a grant are there to have input and then it gets brought to you guys to say, okay, this is bigger than ten thousand dollars. Like we think that this is good to go for, but that you guys get all the information you need before we're here together.
So just to be clear, the what the ten thousand dollar threshold would obfuscate as the grants team, the grant grant review team.
Yeah.
But otherwise it would still go to finance, it would still go to Leo, it would still go to the OCC.
We're just all together. Yeah.
It's just something that you can take off of that new committee, right?
Okay, so we, if you have a five, I I just don't wanna hold up people though, hard for small grants with no match that like they could use the dollars, there's no intense tracking requirement, it's not federal dollars. These be with you, manage your grant, let us know where to record it.
Yeah.
The hope is to get to a higher amount, right?
Yeah.
We have better trust in systems where you could do twenty five or fifty thousand dollars.
Right.
We're not there yet.
Okay.
Um.
I'd love to say that seems really low, but I appreciate your respect for that.
Yeah.
Gratitude.
In the future, I'm like, yes, let's do more than that. Um we want that the department director, even if they're not the manager within their department, they're responsible for making sure finance gives the information and that it's budgeted for because they own their budget. No matter who's managing the grant and their and their team.
Here, here.
So being the directors.
Okay. I don't wanna be a time stop here, but I kinda gotta, but one, I'm wondering something about that situation where it's like.
Yeah.
Wouldn't it apply to, you know, as we build these levels of trust with department directors and stuff? Um what about turnover? Do they have to like reset their grant limits when we're working with someone new and it's like, oh, it's been here three years now, you're twenty five, but.
I think that's why we want a a backup human is to help mitigate that, but also what we want a grant review committee is so that someone between a department and a backup person and all of the people reviewing it knows that it exists.
Okay.
So that we don't have grants that somebody was managing, they left and no, no one knows that it exists.
The hope is that people just start to get into the process of planning for groups, slowing things down instead of, oh squirrel, that's a hundred thousand dollars, let's do it. And really like being thoughtful about it. Um and also starting to plan in this way of having documentation, having a budget, having whose lead, whose second lead, that just becomes part of our culture. You know, this is institutionalizing that, once that just becomes a normal standard operating procedure, then we can lift up the.
The department adds just one part of it, once we understand that this whole machine's running properly, we can bump the RPMs a little bit.
Yeah.
I think there'll also be benefit that's like, let's see cross departmental benefits to these budgets or maybe even opportunity to like collaborate on, oh, for this big pot of money, multiple departments could help strengthen the the trust for this.
I think so, and I think that this gives us the opportunity to say, okay, well then who should be part of helping manage this grant? But when it comes to recording it, usually it's gonna live within someone's budget, so then I think this helps us determine, well, whose budget does it live in?
Yeah.
I like that. Um capital improvement fund policy, um anything, we we say five thousand dollars uh in our other area. Um so I'll reflect that here, but a lot of counties um don't report assets below ten, so I did wanna pitch the thought that we could up what we consider an asset, but I can also keep with the five in the vein of like we maybe wanna start small and then ratchet up what we.
Are we look.
This is like more for the.
Are we looking across sixty four counties statewide or are we looking at comparable counties that have the same kinda revenue and asset?
Smaller counties usually are at that five.
Small, like like you're, are you including us in that, our size counties are usually at five?
Like our size, our size, yeah. Yeah.
Um, okay.
Is there any argument?
I'd be open to discussion.
Is there any argument for like amortization, like if you say, that's where you can like depreciate?
Yeah, I mean, so I I'm fine with.
Appreciate your assets, so you don't have such a big.
Five. So many things to depreciate.
Yeah, so many things to depreciate.
But we can leave it at five with the thought of like maybe in the future when we're really dialed and we know all of our assets, maybe we don't appreciate everything that's not a decent item.
Okay.
You know the, are the IRS guidelines, anything under or anything over?
Okay.
About hundred dollars?
Yeah, well, it depends, your auditor would say anything that's like ten or more is like material, but things that are under ten are not material for the purpose of audit, but
Yeah.
I'm gonna leave it at five cuz I think we're, we're just getting here, not fifteen, to five, yeah.
Let's just.
Okay, um I'm suggesting, and this is where you can say, no, we're not there yet, I think we need uh our capital improvement committee, that's like the right people with the thoughts and things and the info we need. Um I think that the county manager can assign these people, but here are just some suggestions of humans that I think about. Um but this could be really anybody. I think that we wanna make sure that when we're thinking about capital requests, we have a plan to prioritize what what capital assets we have or will be acquiring and our plan for managing those into the future and also setting maybe some priorities, which you guys can suggest different priorities. Um I just think this is a a good plan to say, this is what we'll prioritize.
I would say I love the the idea and, oh, we're such a baby.
I know.
We're such a baby.
If this isn't a now in this policy, you can say this is in a future policy, but I wanna get. So this, if this isn't a now in this policy, you can say, this is in a future policy, but I wanna get us thinking about where we need to be headed, so I cannot do this now.
I wanna. I want us to move here. I'm worried about the staff time, that it could squirrel away. And like, yes, I believe this is part of where we should be going professionally, but until we can like build in the stamina and like.
Like, fine.
Yeah. I want that, but I I just feel like a year and a half into having professionals and.
That's totally fine.
Yeah.
At a minimum, do you think this year, right, we're gonna, when it happens, send out the email about
Capital requests.
the pa- capital requests? When those come in, I'd like to at least have a multidisciplinary team, the staff will review those, prioritize them, send them on to you for
Hmm.
actual voting, just so that there's been.
Yeah.
You know where the staff is feeling, this is priority, this isn't a priority, and then you can make the final decision as a baby step.
Like as a task force, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Like as a, a seasonal task force.
One-time group. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, but not as like a standing committee yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, I totally agree with that.
Because right now, we only really ask for capital requests once a year.
Right. Yeah, I'm a huge, this sounds lovely.
Get about ten requests. And we really have game theory. It used to be like an email to the county manager, like, hey, I wanna rodent blaster. And then we do presentation about the rodent blaster. This past year, I do think it'll be advanced a little bit, you know, asking questions, what are the facilities impact? What is the IT impact? What is the long-term impact? So it does make sense to take the next step in the building block, again, to build that culture and still these practices. They're not extra. This is just how we do business at Lake County Government.
Mm-hmm.
And I thought that this might be a like wait till later, but I'm thinking about processes and policies you wanna move towards.
Hmm.
Um, asset management plan, this essentially says, we'll we'll develop one.
We'll do it.
We'll have it. Um.
So soon.
You guys asked for this and I asked for us to have a resolution to reference because a resolution can can kind of be updated to change amounts. What you guys had to kinda ask for is to streamline, um, like MOUs, year-over-year agreements, uh, and agreements, you know, no greater than twenty-five thousand, so that they're on a consistent agenda for you guys, rather than us meeting for like the amounts of time. So I did ask for a resolution to be passed, so I can reference that resolution and that we can change this from time to time as we feel more comfortable with.
Yeah, that'll be on the six, I think, before you. Basically, it's gonna be county manager budgeted twenty-five K or below, then you will, it'll be on your next agenda. Um, if it's unbudgeted, um, it's, and it's ten K or less, it can just go on consent
Mm-hmm.
at the next PSC meeting. If it's over ten thousand, you'll just have to vote on it as a normal agenda item. And then, yeah, the yearly MOUs, the year-over-year contracts that are big contracts, but they're like the intergovernmental, right, of the DHS, public health, rodent bridge type of ones. We need to talk about emergency, but.
Yeah. Um, these last three are definitely up for, like, you can decide to do at a later date, but I did wanna mention them because I think there are things.
We might have to.
Too. Uh, I know Claire's working on emergency spending, like, policies.
Mm-hmm.
Um, whenever we get to the point where she has her set sick policies, I'd like to reinforce that with our fiscal policies. This is just talking about what happens when we're in, um, an emergency situation.
Declared state of emergency?
Yeah. And clearly, these are not our amounts. These are wild. Uh, but we would like to develop, if we're ever gonna do this, like, appropriate amounts of here's how much this person is authorized to spend in an emergency, um, and how we would notify you guys, but to be able to spend those dollars with without holding up movement of funds in an emergency situation.
Is that, what, is that Eagle Sunday?
Yeah.
I was just gonna say, we need emergency new chair lift with the tubing here, like, Ken, you got this, right, honor?
Yeah, these are their numbers. We're certainly not, we're not doing that, but.
That's precious.
It is.
Yeah, their county manager can approve up to two hundred thousand.
Yeah. We were like, okay, okay, it's not us. So this is a thought, and you can say yay or nay, let me know. We're not doing all, approving everything till June, because I want you to have time to thoughtfully give me input. Um, other things that are nice, and I know Claire would be in favor of doing this, is having an emergency incident fund, like a certain amount of money that's dedicated each year, but can roll back into the general fund if not touched. So it's earmarked.
Hmm.
We did have this with the Lake County Community Fund.
Mm-hmm.
Um, those dollars donated, community fund held it, and then um, this past year, when there was the cold freeze, the community fund kind of unilaterally spent all that money, even though it was supposed to be a city-county kind of agreement. So I think this is why she's wanting to move it to the county dictated dollars.
I'll update on that.
Okay.
But we did contact them, they replenished that fund.
They are, good.
It was an un- unauthorized deduction.
Yeah, they basically put it out.
Yeah. They they took it from the community funds under it.
Okay.
So, yeah. So we certainly don't have to do this, but it's thought as we look to the future, like years and budgets.
Yeah.
And then the last thing is we have a new HR person joining us and we are looking to help ask that person to start to think about some risk mitigation. So this may not be a now thing, but we do eventually wanna have somebody that's like kinda dedicated to mitigating risk for the county and how we'll assess risk and plan to avoid spending lots of money, because we didn't think clearly through, like, what risk are we at in different areas?
Um, wait, this person, I mean, we already get this from CTSI three hours.
CTSI helps us, uh, set our insurance amount, so this is more like assessing countywide, like, risk from systems.
Systems risk.
Oh, boy.
That's cool.
Yeah. This person doesn't exist yet, or who knows if they ever will, but it is a thought as we continue to like grow and think about having better structure and system. So I included them and you can be like, not now, that's not you.
I think Claire wants to comment about the previous section.
Yes.
She said her name's right.
Oh. Is that?
Hey. Sorry, guys, thanks for letting me chime in. I just wanted to add a little bit of clarification. So what we have set up with the community fund is more related to, um, kind of direct support for victims of a disaster or an emergency. So last time it was used was during COVID. Um, there was an unmet needs committee, they helped with, um, rent payments, food assistance, kind of things like this. What this fund would more look at is how the county responds to emergencies. So it could be used for things like shelter setup and operation, um, resource ordering, overtime, all those kind of things that are more direct county expenses. Um, the disaster relief fund we have with the community fund is more for kind of direct victim support. So just wanted to add some clarification to both of those.
Does this wanna cover any, like, emergency housing, the that type of fund you were interested in, Claire?
Sorry, can you say that a little bit louder? Just having trouble hearing you.
Sorry, this wouldn't cover, you know, emergency housing or those types of things that you were still rely on the community fund for it?
Not this fund specifically. I think this fund has a little bit more of that declaration, um, attached to it that it would needed to be used, where I think that emergency housing lives more is in the response line item in my budget. So OEM has a five thousand dollar response line item. Um, and that is used for things like emergency housing assistance, if someone or is the victim of a structure fire or something. Um, and that's kind of when OEM can step in and help for things that aren't declared disasters. But we still have that flexibility to help with our community. Um, it can also be helped for kind of initial response calls. So this is looking at, um, this emergency fund, in my, in my vision, is looking at more full EOC activations, declared disasters, um, and then looking at the line item in the OEM budget for kind of smaller incidents or just OEM assistance. Uh, I've supported fire EMS sometimes, or kind of help for them where they're overwhelmed, um, but isn't rising to that complex incident.
Gotcha.
Just a really quick explanation, I can clarify anything.
That makes sense to me.
Thank you, guys.
Is it same?
Thanks, Claire.
No, I've kind of left it open to if we wanna do it, what we would do. I think Claire had said maybe two hundred thousand was a good suggestion, because that kind of picked your brain before doing this. Um, last thing is debt policy. This really, um, determine, establishes like what our debt limits will be. Um, and it really mimics our current policy on debt. It's just formatted a little different, that we'll, you know, do our reporting. Like, even on our COP, I have to do reporting, um, to the Fed through a per- a portal called Emma, and I have to do that reporting on the COP every year, like, how much should we spend? What, you know, what, where all did it go? There's a pretty, I have to upload our audit every year. So like, making sure that any of our debt requirements and recording and compliance is happening. Um, and also be fiscally responsible to only utilize that, you know, when we need it uh, at a very, like, in-depth level and then just being conscientious, you know, about purchasing of bonds, revenues, et cetera, how we would do those things. And last but not least, I really wanna have when we approve a policy and if we change it, that we have the previous one stated, so there's no question about which policy is in this current version. Um, and then also be able to note, um, any, I really like the idea of adding, like, towards the bottom, like, noting any, um, any, uh, resolutions that we approve. So like, we've approved a resolution that goes alongside this policy, we can say, hey, this is the current resolution with this policy, or we've replaced this resolution with this one. This is it, that's all.
That's cool. I like that part.
It gives a little bit of like context. We hunt for a lot of historical documents, trying to figure out what we said before, and I think this tells you, okay, this is what we said before. You can go find this instead of, I don't even know what I'm looking for.
Yeah.
To see what we said before. That's it.
Change the revolution.
That's all.
Well, good job. Did all that in one week.
Last week was bad.
Yeah.
You too, huh?
Yeah.
Well, impressive. Thank you on multiple levels. Helps feel confident that, you know, everything we've already kind of said about who's been dying, brachial. What you guys are doing is gonna help the people, this community, generations.
Our great-grand employees.
Yeah.
That's right.
And if you think about things later or have input, I know you're busy, just shoot an email. Will you really pull this, pull this off of approving these policies next week? Because I wanna make sure we create processes that are workable for people before we throw another policy change at them without a way to get it done. We're really frustrated often about the grants policy, because the policy and procedure are intermingled, it's not clear who does what and when do they do it. And I wanna be really intentional to have those things lined out, even though they can change as systems change. So that people have a clear way to accomplish what we're asking for before we throw it out there like at them, so that they're, they have an opportunity to be involved in creating those processes and they're doing it with us. And this is workable. So I did ask for it not to be on approval next week, because I really want the processes to be clear for people and give them opportunity for feedback afterward.
Mm-hmm.
We stink a big change.
I think that's wise. We have a good rule, but we all get, we all get removing our policy.
Yeah, are there instances like where everyone in the department has P-card? Like where you talked about a lot earlier before?
We've cut down on a lot of them, um. I'm really hoping to get this in place and then start to pull back some of the unnecessary P-cards. Kind of hard to do with our current policy, so I do wanna get this done. But I also think it'll be a really great time, we're looking at switching P-card surfers anyways, because Wells Fargo has been charging us so much extra. I think it could be nice to do it all at once. So if we are gonna switch P-card users, here's a new platform and here's the process for uploading your receipts and approving as the department director.
Mm-hmm.
Um. So that's kind of why the timing, so we can make those changes, so this is like a one, one big change and we help people work through it.
Yeah. Liz, are you, will you please make sure that it gets taken off of our agenda for next?
It's already off.
Okay, awesome, thanks.
Yeah, you're best.
And it gives you time to give you real feedback, if you really think about something, or you go read it and you're like, that doesn't make sense for us, let's not do that.
Mm-hmm.
I wanna do that before we just chuck it out there.
Okay.
I think we talked about doing some like soft.
Yeah.
Launches. Soft launches, soft opening, you know, of a try it with a few departments, see how it goes, you know, what feedback we get. And then the lawn, um, we just have a really bad history of poor change management, so.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Slow down, orientational.
That's great.
What do you think, Kate? I have a ton of notes.
Okay.
But we have an appointment soon, so I'll go over.
I think it's tomorrow.
Tomorrow, I have a first one, no, Thursday.
Thursday, sorry.
Yeah, we're still on the challenge.
I don't even know what day we're here.
When would you like feedback for our, our homework?
Um, even if it's just by the end of this month, that would be really helpful. I mean, we really want to take time to have real actionable feedback and thought, not just rush to throw something together, because we don't wanna change this all the time.
Yeah.
We want to like get this set and be like, our process can change, but how we do it, it stays the same for a while.
Okay.
That's all I have for you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
But you're saying you're gonna soft softly implement this before we do it?
Some of the processes.
Oh, I see.
To make sure that they work for you.
Okay.
We've really found that helpful, doing it in a smaller test group, in that environment of of trusted people, to not rise up with pitchforks. Um, and you just run it through them for a week or two and see what shakes, and then you can, it helps to point to the larger groups.
They they throw up flags or like.
Yeah.
See we can't do this, this is impossible. Cool. Very good.
I don't know how to drive. Art curtain.
Okay. Well, if that, uh, is all that we have, thank you, Candace.
Yeah, thanks.
Uh, radical. It's a good one, anyway.
That was it.
Um. Two forty-nine PM. Uh, no one has anything else, questions, comments, concerns? I'm going to conclude today's afternoon work session of Wake County, Boote County, Christianers.